To order at 7:00 PM, Mr. Aho, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Felber?
Here.
Mr. Solara?
Here.
Mr. Curtis?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. DeFavio?
Here.
All right, now that we're all here, if you could all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. All right, good evening and welcome again. Again, this is the board meeting for Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. I'm Rob Felber, it's my honor to be your president. This will probably be my shortest president's report on record. I want to welcome the students, families, and faculty from Samuel Bissell Elementary and R.B. Chamberlain Middle School. If you've been watching some of the news, you know that we have a very important renewal levy on the ballot. It's issue five on May 7th. And, you know, you've often heard the overused phrase, "It takes a village to raise a child." But in this case, it seems like we also have support of many other organizations. So to date, Twinsburg City Council, Twinsburg Township, Twinsburg Chamber of Commerce, TEA, the Teachers Education Association, Northeast Ohio Education Association, and the Twinsburg Foundation to date have all shown support for this levy. So this is another critical renewal. It is not a new tax. And if anyone has any questions, of course, they can, you know, reach out to any one of us. Our staffing is about eighty-five percent of our budget, and this particular renewal levy is eight point five percent of our overall budget. So very critical to maintaining the services that everybody's come to understand and believe in with the Twinsburg City Schools. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Powers for the superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. Felber. Good evening, Board of Education, families. Good evening. We're so glad to see everyone here. All of our students are here this evening, and we are here to celebrate some outstanding students here in our district. But before we get to celebrating students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School and R.B. Chamberlain Middle School, we do have a couple of other announcements to make. As I've said before, kindergarten registration is just around the corner, and parents of children who will be five years of age before August 1st of this year are asked to visit the district website and then click on the "For Parents" tab, scrolling down to access registration information. Once you're there, you'll be asked to create an account, and then you'll be asked to complete the pre-registration information, and then to schedule an appointment for yourself and your child. Now, this is kindergarten screening, so not only are our parents coming on these appointments, but we're asking the soon-to-be kindergarten children to come too. Now, this year, kindergarten registration will be held at the Twinsburg Community Center as it usually is, and we appreciate Mayor Yates and Mr. Schroeder for allowing us to use their space up behind the Swinkle. And this year, the dates for registration are April 15th, 16th, and 17th. And that's about three weeks earlier than usual. So if you've been expecting registration, it's almost here, it's almost right around the corner. And so we look forward to meeting all of our new parents and all of our students. And as I mentioned it before, this is the class of 2032 that will be coming through the doors at Wilcox Primary School. So it's a long time since I've graduated. Huh?[228.12][228.12](laughing) So we look forward to meeting our new students and their parents, and are delighted. All of the preparations that are being done by Ms. Villa and her staff, it always seems to go like clockwork, so we appreciate Ms. Villa and her staff and our parents, our PTA, who also come out and assist our registration process. Board of Education, as you know from my correspondence to you earlier today, this afternoon, Mr. Aho, Mr. Walker, and I attended the regional meeting regarding the proposed Cup-Patterson Fair Funding Model. Let me begin by stating that we are sincerely appreciative of the collaborative efforts facilitated by Representative Cup and Representative Patterson. Their bipartisan approach in addressing a longstanding problem with the manner in which education is funded in Ohio is certainly refreshing. Further, the fact that the proposal was developed by school administrators in collaboration with Representative Cup and Patterson is unique and valuable, as school leaders know school funding the best. So we are asking Board of Education if you would kindly help us in getting the word out that this is a very important time in the history of public education. They were mentioning today, and Marty can say a few words here too, that this is a legacy moment, and that when you're talking about fixing the funding of public education in Ohio, it's not an easy fix, and it's not a perfect fix, but people are working together to try to fix the problem. And so we do really appreciate the efforts of our Board of Education and our parents of reaching out to our state legislators to make sure that they understand that their work is appreciated, and although it's not perfect, I think this is going to be a very exciting time for public education if we can get this done. Marty, did you want to add a few words about this?
Yeah, I think it's a great opportunity. They've come up with a nice model. I think that it has the ability then to funnel funds into special areas, which I think is kind of important. So I just think it's a good model.
Right. So again, the simulations were released just last week on Friday, and our school district is optimistic about what might be. But a reminder that this is all a conversation at this point, it is not even a bill yet. What's going on is that the representatives down in Columbus are hearing testimony from many, many different organizations in support or not in support of the simulation models, and they will eventually determine whether or not this will be pushed forward for possible consideration as law. And so the time crunch here is that the biennial budget is due to be completed, I think, the middle of June. So there is not a lot of time. So if you are a person that is interested in reaching out to our state legislators, I encourage you to do that, to take a look at all of the press releases that have been happening. If you look at my superintendent's message, it'll be posted tomorrow, there will be more information out there. And I know that Mr. Curtis has been intimately involved in the effort, Mr. Felber has been as well as the rest of the Board of Education, and so they're able to answer questions if you have them. Marty and I are like able to do so as well. So thank you for, first of all, being aware that this is going on in the state. It's really important that we are staying on top of this, and that we appreciate the efforts of those individuals who've been working behind the scenes to get it to where it is, and now we just have to get it past the goal line, and I'm very hopeful that that just might be the case. So thank you for your interest in that. I didn't know if Mr. Felber or Mr. Curtis wanted to add any comments to that.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Curtis, this is your world.
You've done an excellent job. I would expect to just prospects, the significance at this juncture, given how long it has been. So I appreciate that you and Marty were able to attend and get a little bit more information, a little bit more updated information.
Sure. I would add that, you know, there are articles that have been out there. Just to reinforce what Superintendent Powers said, this is a proposal, it's a conversation. Hasn't even gone to the Senator House, it's not a bill, so a lot of people like to count chickens before they're hatched. We've been down this road with the tangible personal property for ten, fifteen years of promises, and we ended up, really, you know, nothing came of it. Lot of legislation, a lot of effort, and they phased it out, you know, despite all the efforts of six hundred and thirteen districts around the state. So I guess it's like a roller coaster, hang on.
And I think the importance here is that it's not so much that the dollars have been dropped in, it's about the fact that they're talking about how to fix the funding formula. Because for many years, our school district has been capped. Some school districts are what is considered to be capped, and some school districts are on something called the guarantee. And so that we're not currently being funded at the formula that is currently in Ohio. And so this is really important that they're having the conversation about how do you fix it? How do you actually determine what it costs to educate a typical child in a public school district in Ohio? And that's what the conversation is all about. And so if we can figure that out, and if we can ultimately get the support of the legislators and be able to push this into law, I think that we can finally answer all of the questions surrounding the Deroff decision of many years ago. So we appreciate, again, your interest, your support, and we'll continue to keep everyone posted as this moves along down the road. In other news, it is almost time for the Twinsburg Tiger Spirit Run. How's that for a segue? On Saturday, May 11th, at 10 o'clock in the morning, it will be the date of the Tiger Spirit Fun Run, and Mr. Mark Bindis and our District Wellness Committee are busy at work trying to plan a morning of fitness and fun. There will be a flyer on Flyer Central at our link off of our website that will give you all of the information that you need to register your family to come on out for a morning of fitness and fun. And $1 from the registration of all of our families will go to, from each of our families will go to the Emergency Assistance Center for all of the great work they do here in our pause on child hunger in the school district. So we appreciate Mr. Bindis and all of the members of our District Wellness Committee, and we hope that you'll be able to join us on, it's on Saturday, May 11th, at 10 o'clock at Tiger Stadium. So I think I've spoken enough for the evening, and we have a lot of wonderful students and staff members to celebrate tonight, and so I'd like to ask Mrs. Johnson to please come forward as we celebrate wonderful students from Samuel Bissell Elementary School.
And while she's coming down, I have the duty to unfortunately say, the fire code does not let us have people standing in the aisles, so I see quite a few chairs up front. They do check on us, so for those in the back, come on up front, there's plenty of chairs.
Good evening, everyone. We're here today to celebrate some very exciting news, we're celebrating our students and the great work that they do at Samuel Bissell Elementary School. And right after I'm done, we'll be hearing from R.B.C. Chamberlain as well. So we're here to celebrate today, so students and staff members. And so I'll talk to you a little bit about how Samuel Bissell Elementary School selects our students. The Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, civic, volunteer, or other accomplishments that set this student apart from their peers. So at this time, we would like to proudly acknowledge, we're going to start with our second graders. So second graders, when I call your name, you're going to come up and you're going to shake Mrs. Powers' hand, you're going to see Mr. Winter to receive your certificate, you're going to give me a hug, and then you're going to shake the hand of Mr. Felber, and he will give you something as well. And when you're done, you're going to walk down, and you're going to stand in the front and hold your certificate very proudly. So let's start with Brooke Anderson from Mrs. Springer's class. Is Brooke here today?[774.12][774.12](applause) Abby DePew from Mrs. Doyle's class.[781.12][781.12](applause) Catalina Hunter from Mrs. Roebel's class.[798.12][798.12](applause) Azan Siddiq from Mrs. Finn's class.[830.12][830.12](applause) Abby Roseniak from Miss Jolly's class.[843.12][843.12](applause) At this time, if we can give these boys and girls a round of applause. Nice job, students.[858.12][858.12](applause) Isn't it so wonderful? I don't have to tell them how to smile. Look at those wonderful smiles.[866.12][866.12](laughing) Did everyone get a picture? Awesome job. Okay, second graders, you can have a seat. Nice job.[873.31][873.31](applause) And now for our third graders. Kelsey Clune from Miss Balinski's class.[922.12][922.12](applause) Olivia Conway from Mrs. DePew's class.[935.12][935.12](applause) Patrick Drake from Mrs. Roebel's class.[948.12][948.12](applause) Noriah Frederick from Mrs. Pease's class.[962.12][962.12](applause) Giada Magnus from Mrs. Langhoff's class.[971.12][971.12](applause) And Tristan Revere Green from Mrs. Langhoff's class.[985.12][985.12](applause) Nice smiles, everyone. Once again, if we can give these students a round of applause.[1004.12][1004.12](applause) Very nice job. Their graders, you can have a seat at this time. And for our Staff of the Month, if I could have Mr. Hoffman come to the front, please.[1017.12][1017.12](applause) At Samuel Bissell Elementary School, our staff members[1025.12][1025.12](laughing) our staff members nominate different staff, other staff members for Staff of the Month. So I would like to share with you what was written about Mr. Hoffman. We would like to nominate Mr. Hoffman for Staff of the Month. For many years, Mr. Hoffman was the full-time guidance counselor here at Bissell Elementary. However, the past couple of years, he had to split between Wilcox and Bissell. This year, we got Mr. Hoffman back full-time. He has really done a great job coming back to Bissell full-time. He puts a lot of time and effort into coming into our classrooms and teaching guidance lessons. He created a wonderful group called Kindness Club, and he does all kinds of lunch bunch groups for students in the building. Mr. Hoffman plays a wonderful role as the fun guy whom the students feel safe and comfortable to go and see him or spend time with him when they need a break from the stresses of our demanding school day. He deals with so many different issues with a cool, calm, and collective leveled approach. Mr. Hoffman has been thinking of many different strategies and activities to start to implement into the school days so that the students are able to deal with all the pressures they feel. Mr. Hoffman sure is earning his keep, and we couldn't think of anyone else we would want giving us the support he gives us. Thanks for all you do. And that was written by Mrs. DePew and Mrs. Hayes. Congratulations, Mrs. (applause). Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Powers.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. We'd like to ask Mr. Rista, please come forward as we celebrate students at R.B. Chamberlain Middle School. Good evening.
Well, congratulations to all the Bissell students who were Students of the Month. I can't wait to get to Chamberlain to carry on the high expectations that we have. We got back from break and we're so busy. We have our school play, our musicians are getting ready for OMEA contests, we have softball going on, our baseball's going on, and we have about a hundred and fifty kids who are going to be in our track team, and they have their first meet tomorrow, so we have to get a whole bunch of buses so they can, they can go run. And we also had our expectation meetings. When we, every nine weeks, we have our expectation meetings. We go over our expectations with our students, and these students tonight are students who always meet expectations. And our expectations are to, are respect, responsibility, and right choices. So when you get to R.B.C., we expect you to be respectful to each other, to make right choices, and to be responsible. And this is what these students do each and every day. And starting with our seventh graders, we have Caroline Boskely.[1210.12][1210.12](applause) And our eighth graders, Angelina Agresta.[1265.12][1265.12](applause) That was Seth tonight. And Anthony Riad.[1309.12][1309.12](applause) All right, one more round of applause for our R.B.C. Students of the Month.[1319.12][1319.12](applause) You have to hold your signs up like, like Mr. Hoffman did, okay? With the big smiles.[1327.12][1327.12](laughing)
Lots of great students to celebrate this evening. We thank you for being here, and Mr. Felber, that concludes my report for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Powers, and congratulations to all our students. This is normally the time we go into committee reports, but it's also a good time to escape, unless you really want to stay
Escape.
Did I say escape? We can't, but[1360.53][1360.53](laughing) time to do homework, have dinner, all that.[1364.41][1364.41](laughter)
My teachers in.
We'll get next to them.
Yep.
See them?
Yeah. Lot of high school teachers.
That would be your staff sitting in the back.
Yeah.
It's like church.
This is the first time a slow, green kid's doing it. It's because I'm broke, though. I don't pay any schools.
It's fine. It's very fine.
All right, we're going to continue on with our meeting and see if there's any committee reports from my colleagues.
No. Not this time.
Light round, so I'm going to turn the meeting back over to Superintendent Powers for the administrative reports.
Thank you, Mr. Felber. As you know, Board of Education, this year, every year, we have district goals, and every year, we have a goal that talks about how well our students are growing over the course of the year. And this year, a little bit different. As you know, Board of Education, by the quarter, we have been coming forward and presenting to you and to our community the progress that our students are making from one quarter to the next. A couple of weeks back, you requested that we would take a different kind of look at the presentation this evening, and in particular, we were asked to create a presentation that talks about the growth that our students are making in a specific subgroup. And tonight, we're going to talk specifically about students with disabilities, but I do want to just couch that with the understanding that in our school district, as Mrs. Trapphegan will often say, "All means all." And the programs that we're going to talk about this evening are not only programs that we are proud of presenting to you because they are plans of intervention and assistance for students who may be struggling in school, but we also have programs, the same programs that we are encouraged in the progress being shown by all of our students. And so I just wanted to make sure that, we put that on the front of our presentation this evening, that all means all, and that the services that we provide our students are not based necessarily upon any particular disability or identifying label, but really, it's based on where the particular child's needs happen to be. And many years ago, the administrative team had a motto, and we still live by that today, and that is that we know every child's story. And with every child's story comes the need to make sure that we're almost prescriptive in the programming that we provide for the students, so that we are assisting them to be the best that they can be at no matter what level they happen to be, no matter what grade they happen to be in. So I'm very proud this evening, Board of Education, to invite to the podium members of our administrative team, and also this evening, you will see that we have the support of many members of our teaching staff, because when it's all said and done, what happens in the classroom happens because of very talented educators who truly and genuinely care about the success of our students. No matter where they are, no matter what grade they are, these teachers, these talented teachers, these talented educators from preschool all the way to grade 12, really have the hearts of educators and are here to do what's best by the students that we are so privileged and proud to say are Tigers. So this evening, I'd like to ask to come first to the podium, Mrs. Jennifer Farthing, our Director of Curriculum, who will begin our presentation. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here this evening for our third quarter Continuous Improvement Plan update, also known as the CIP. For those families that are viewing online, this is the third update we've had to the Board of Education for our Continuous Improvement Plan. Each fall, we collaborate to create our district goals. The student growth component is as follows. During the 2018-19 school year, the Twinsburg City School District will address the needs of the whole child through innovative programming while preparing students to be enrolled in post-secondary schooling, enlisted in the military, or be competitively employed. As that goal was approved, we wanted to make sure that we were moving the needle in the correct direction at every opportunity for every student this school year. As Mrs. Powers said, we do pride ourselves on knowing every child's story. I am pleased to be here with my colleagues this evening, and would now like to turn the presentation over to Mrs. Denise Trapphegan, Director of Pupil Services.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Powers. Tonight, we're going bowling. And so you probably are thinking, why bowling? And what does bowling have to do with educating our students? All our building administrators, along with our teacher teams, and Mrs. Farthing and myself, have been attending in-service training through the SST8. This past January, we attended an in-service from Dr. Shelley Moore from Canada, and she, her presentation was on values of effective practices in inclusion. And tonight, as Mrs. Powers stated, we have a number of our teachers that, both regular ed teachers and special ed teachers, because we believe all means all, and each student is, we have to know each student's story. And I am very proud to say tonight that these teachers attended these meetings, they have looked at the research and what we have to do differently in Twinsburg. And tonight, I'm using the, or we are using the analogy of bowling, because at our in-service training, Shelley Moore used this analogy to help us look at how we are serving students in the general ed curriculum, and what do we need to do to change our aim to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students. And so we're borrowing this presentation tonight, and at the end of our presentation, you are going to see a three-minute clip of Dr. Shelley Moore. And to let you know also that all of our building
This past January, we attended an in-service from Dr. Shelley Moore from Canada. And she, her presentation was on values of effective practices in inclusion. And tonight, as Mrs. Powers stated, we have a number of our teachers that, both regular ed teachers and special ed teachers, because we believe all means all and each student is, we have to know each student's story. And I am very proud to say tonight that these teachers attended these meetings, they have looked at the research and what we have to do differently in Twinsburg. And tonight, I'm using the, or we are using the analogy of bowling, because at our in-service training, Shelley Moore used this analogy to help us look at how we are serving students in the general ed curriculum. And what do we need to do to change our aim to make sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our students? And so we're borrowing this presentation tonight. And at the end of our presentation, you are going to see a three-minute clip of Dr. Shelley Moore. And to let you know also that all of our building administrators have shown this video to all of our teachers. So for the purpose of our presentation tonight, I want you to think of the bowling ball as instruction and the pins as our students. And as you know, if those of you have bowled, that the hardest shot to take is the seven-ten split. Well, three years ago, and we recognized as a district that we were at the seven-ten split. We needed to make some changes in how we are meeting the needs of our students and our delivery of students, and our delivery of services. We were rolling the ball up the middle. And we were knocking down the pins in the middle, but we still had some pins standing. So we needed, we knew we needed to do some things differently. So what we did is we embarked on some in-service training through our SST, because we know that continuity of program is important to our district as students go from one building to the other. And over the past three years, all of our building principals, teams of teachers, which you see represented here tonight, and these are lead teachers that are dedicated to this district, and I am proud as a Director of Pupil Services to be working with a strong administrative team and the teachers that we have represented here tonight, because they're doing an awesome job as far as trying to move the needle with our stu-, with all of our students. The trainings that we started three years ago, when we recognized we had to do, we had to, we had to do a different aim as far as the ball. And we first visited the three, the three years ago, the least restrictive environment cohort, and that was again in, at the SST. And here, we learned that we need to educate all of our students as much as possible in the general ed curriculum and bring our services and wrap these services around these students in the general ed classroom and stop pulling them out. We also, last year, sent a group of teachers and administrators and Mrs. Farthing and myself to a co-teaching cohort, and we also talked about universal design of learning through the SST, SST8. And to, just to kind of define what universal design of learning is, it's a framework of how we look at the individual designing of instruction and assessment and methods to meet the individual needs of our students. And the way people learn, we're all diverse. It was, it's as diverse as the fingerprints on our, as our fingerprints. And one of the things we have learned from going to these in-services, when we talk about our tiered services, we have a tier one, which is our universal instruction for all kids. Tier two, we look at targeted and we look at, you know, different, small group instruction and those type of things. And tier three, our individual and more intense intervention. And what we're learning from going to these in-services is that the best tier three, which is our individual intense instruction, should be our tier one, that we should be meeting the needs of all of our students and supporting them in a multi-tier assistance. This year, continuing with the in-services our teachers have attended, we had the opportunity, again through SST, to invite some of our leading teachers, and these are hand-selected teachers by our administrators, that to go to, to attend these meetings, to implement, co-plan, co-serv throughout the district. And this is the equity for all students. And some of the research we looked at there was from Elise Futura and Colleen Caper from the University of Wisconsin. And they are looking at a comprehensive system of quality and taking proactive steps for closing the achievement gap, which is a framework and a process of advancing learning for all students. And through this, through this, through this training, we also, the last thing that we looked at was, again, the training of Dr. Shelley Moore. And she did her inclusion, her training on inclusion. And we did two trainings in January, and we're going to be doing our third training with her next week. And you're going to see a lot of the things that she talked about in her presentation in the presentations throughout the evening from the administrators and the teachers. I want to draw your attention to this slide. This past February, Dr. Kim Monacino, who is the Director of Ohio Exceptional Children for the Ohio Department of Education, met with all the Directors of Pupil Services across the state and on our different regions. And what it, what she wanted to do is she wanted to share the Equality and Educational Research Series and give us a snapshot of how Ohio is identifying and meeting the needs of students with disability compared to the nation. And as you see up there, the nation is at 13.2 percent. Ohio is a little higher, at 15.2 percent. And what we did as an administrative team, we thought it would be a good comparison to see where Twinsburg is as far as Ohio and across the nation. And we are lower than both the nation and the state at 10.7 percent. So what this shows us is that the teachers here tonight and the administration is putting in place what we have learned from our in-service training, and they're making a stronger tier one for all of our students. So thank you, thank you, thank you, teachers. The next slide is our students' value-added data, and this is from the, over the past three years. We don't have our current data this year, but this is over the past three years. We have made progress in our aim of the, of the seven-nine split, or the seven-ten split, but we still need to practice our aim and to reach our, reach our goals of knocking down all those pins. Some of the practices that we still need to do and the aims that we need to practice include scheduling, common planning time for our teachers, and our case load size of our intervention specialists and our related services as they are very high. And so these are the three things that we need to, you know, keep practicing at. And at this time, I would, I would like each building, at this time, each building is going to share their data on closing the gap that was shared with us in our individual CIP meetings with Mrs. Powers and Mrs. Farthing. And then we will show a three-minute video from Dr. Shelley Moore on the seven-ten split. And then we're going to conclude. Now, because of time tonight, we only had one group of teachers from one building are going to come and speak tonight. But as you can see from the audience, there are a number of teachers here that are shared, will be sharing in this, in this, in this same delivery of services. But because of time, we're only having one team present. So the team will be from Samuel Bissell Elementary School, and they will be showing how they have changed their aim and are serving our children. But again, the last in-service that we attended at SST8 was in March, March 20th. And I couldn't have been more proud of our administration and our teachers, of what they brought forward to the table and what their plan is as far as meeting not only our, for all of our students. And it even goes further than that. All means all, but we have to look at each of those all and know their stories. And the passion and the thinking outside the box and the different strategies and the methods that they came up with, I couldn't be more proud. And so I'm looking forward to planning with our administration and our teacher teams and for next year. And again, we do have some barriers, and I stated that to my, one of the things we really got to pay close attention to is our class sites for our intervention specialists and related services. And we've shared that across the district with our administrative, with our administrative team. So at this time, I would like to turn the program over to Lynn Bell.
Hi, good evening. For comparison's sake and to be consistent from building to building, we are looking tonight at the 2017-18 school year in order to be looking at state assessments and how we compare with that, what Ohio Department of Ed is saying. Before I get into the data that's up on the screen there, I need to kind of give you some background. At Wilcox, our preschool students and our kindergarten students participate in a state assessment. What you're looking at right there is the early learning assessment, and it is research-based. It's given to our preschool students twice during the school year. But it isn't, given the age of our preschoolers, who range from three to five years old, this is not a written assessment or a computer-based assessment. It is not even an assessment that's done at a single point in time. Instead, what it really is, is a formative process. Our teachers are trained to complete observations over time, looking at our students in routine activities and their normal classroom. And they are looking, then they score them basically on a rubric about how they're doing. So the area that you're looking at up there is vocabulary development on the early learning assessment. This is a language and literacy area that Wilcox has marked for our own improvement. On this vocabulary assessment, teachers are looking for a lot of things. And now, put a three- to five-year-old in your mind. They're looking first for receptive language. Do the children demonstrate that they understand language? The next piece is expressive language. Can they communicate? And are we looking, over the years that they are with us in preschool, are they improving in their language, going from labeling things with nouns to speaking in phrases and eventually speaking in sentences? And that's how that progression moves along. We're looking for children to make connections from familiar words and phrases to things that are novel to them. Can they make those, those connections for themselves? Can they expand the use of verbs, using similar verbs? So they may know walk, but eventually will they know jog and run and skip? And then finally, in this vocabulary section, we're looking at the identifying more than one meaning for a word. So if you say the word duck through a three-year-old, you know exactly what they're thinking of. But there are multiple meanings to that word, and so that's that vocabulary development. So giving you that background, now we can look at the data. So in this slide, fall, this is fall of last year. This is before our kindergarten prep program started. So what we're looking at right now are students from the Integrated Preschool Program only. And about a little over 50% of our students in the IPP are students with disabilities, about 53 students in that slide there. You can see that our students, our peer models, definitely outperformed our students with disabilities. But this is not unexpected, because our Integrated Preschool Program is designed to identify those children early in their career, so that we can get them into a language-rich environment and they can be exposed to the literacy and those foundational skills early on. So this is not very surprising. Some of those children are identified as early as two years old, and they start with us on their third birthday. Almost 74% of those third, of those children, 39 of them, began preschool below proficient last year. And that compares to, you can see the other, it's almost an exact opposite of the two, because the numbers are a little different, because we have fewer peer models. But that compares to 26% of our peers who started preschool a little bit lower. Most of these students with disabilities are identified with speech-language delays or developmental disabilities. When they are that young, we don't always give them a disability category that you might be more familiar with, like autism, multiple disabilities, down such. So this, this data is not very surprising to us. This is why we choose strong peer models through a screening process, so that they can work with us, so we can have this fully inclusive model for our students. What I think is more relevant is looking at the next slide, which is the spring of last year. And we look at this spring early learning assessment for our preschoolers. You can see that both the peer models and our students with disabilities showed growth. After nine months in a language-rich environment, we started to help our youngest students close that gap. The number of non-proficient students with disabilities decreased from 39, so that, in the first slide, there were 39 children. That orange piece there is 27 of those children. What we know in preschool and at Wilcox is that we, we, many times, I think I have spoken to you about Dr. Dana Suskind and the 30 million-word gap. Early and frequent exposure to all kinds of language improves school readiness and lifelong learning in every subject. At Wilcox, the journey starts with us. We're just starting them out. This is just the very, very beginning of their educational career. But from the fall to the spring of last year, you can see we made some gains. And our next slide is the other state assessment that our students participate in. Like the early learning assessment, our kindergarten students participate in what we call the KRA, or the Kindergarten Readiness Assessment. This is a little bit of a misnomer, because the things that they are looking for in the KRA are really the kindergarten curriculum. For example, on this assessment, teachers, like the ELA, there is a component where they're observing students in their natural environment. And then in addition to that, the students take the next step, and there are some pieces where they do it on an iPad or on a computer. So there are some of those types of things. But here are the things they're assessing in this, this test. Prepositions, rhyming, recognizing letter sounds at the beginning of words, story elements such as character and setting, nouns and verbs, letter identification, and letter sound correspondence. And even though they call this a readiness assessment, that is what we teach in kindergarten. And this test is only given once at the beginning of the year. So, and similar to the ELA, it's scored on a rubric, but there are three areas. There's emerging, approaching, and demonstrating those skills. And once again, as it's not, not unexpected, our students with disabilities are still emerging in those areas. But what is significant about this particular slide is that we are talking about 25 students in that students with disability column. The top portion there, that's 64%, is 16 children. The brown in the middle is eight, and the bottom one is, the bottom blue part is one child. That is compared to the other column, where there are 256 peer models. So one student scoring in one category really can affect that percentile, or that percentage. We don't have a KRA at the end of the year, but we do know that our students are making progress, because the teachers take this information, they take our kindergarten screening information, and then they work with the children at their level, as Mrs. Trapphegan had shared. We, and we are monitoring them all the time, through observation, through checklists. Our teachers are creating assessments. They drill down, I watch our intervention specialists, they can drill down to the absolute skill that any child needs and find a way to make learning fun and creative and attacking those areas that they, that they're struggling in. So I, I, I look at this and I, it's a snapshot, it's a beginning snapshot, it's not unexpected, because that's where they are. But I don't know that, to me, it isn't the most relevant data for us, because I know, I see the growth. I see from the beginning of the year where they can't write their name, and the end of the year, our kindergartners are writing sentences. And the more that we work with them, the closer that we get them to be fluent readers by the end of first grade, when they're moving on to Bissell. So these two assessments show where our students are at the beginning of their educational journey before we send them on to the next buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. And as we continue to move the needle, the one thing I, I try to stay away from are the end result numbers, because when you just look at percentages, I think you miss the, the opportunity to celebrate the success of students as they make growth along the year, in the entire year. But once they get to Bissell, you heard Ms. Villa talk about some of the things they focus on at Wilcox. We continue that focus when they get to us, but the most important thing is, we start off getting to know our students, understanding the way they learn, how they learn, and what makes them tick. And so that comes from getting to know their story, understanding the learner that's in front of you. And so our teachers spend a lot of time building relationships in the beginning, understanding what it's going to take to move students. And in doing so, when our second graders come in and we get to know them, we understand where they are and what they need. And some of the programs that we have in place that are available for our, all students, but also, we do target some students who are in need of some specific skills. Some of our students are involved in what we call our Tiger Camp, which is a center-based instruction. And students have the opportunity within that center base to have that intensive support as it relates to phonics building, as it relates to guided reading. as it relates to guided reading, as it relates to the structure of writing, and certainly as it relates to vocabulary building. And so those particular skills are intense at that Tiger Camp, which happens Monday through Thursday for an hour and a half every day. With that being said, that's just not our students with disabilities. We are also looking at those students who are struggling in those areas, and they are a part of that. So that when they then go back into the regular ed classroom, they continue that support in those skills in that setting. Along with that, we do look at our students, second and third. We did Tiger Camp for second and third grade for many years. But as you heard Mrs. Trapp-Hagan say, we talked and learned a lot about inclusion and how important it is to make sure that we are exposing all of our kids to the rigor at the end of the year. Because come into third grade, it doesn't matter if you have an identification or not. You are expected to pass that Ohio State's test. And so it's so important that we do our part in preparing them for that. And in doing so, we have really looked at the co-teaching. So when we first started a couple of years ago, and we started with our training, we had teachers who then came back and trained our staff members. And we talked about the importance of, and you'll hear a little bit about what inclusion really is. So, because for so many years, we looked at what we thought we were doing a great job with, what they title as integration, segregation, and exclusion in some cases. And so you'll hear a little bit about that a little bit later. But what we're finding is that that inclusion piece, including everyone, and providing that tier-one support that Mrs. Trapp-Hagan talked about, that tier-one support is so important because it's support for all kids. And again, it goes back to, once you understand how they learn and you provide differentiation in your instruction and making sure you are allowing for students to have choice in some matters of how they can demonstrate their learning, that becomes more important than just trying to teach you to hole or aim down the middle, as you heard Mrs. Trapp-Hagan say. So with that in mind, we began to learn more about co-teaching. We began to pilot co-teaching, so to speak. And this year, in second grade, we have looked at co-teaching in some subjects, and we have full inclusion co-teaching in third grade. And you're going to hear the teachers talk about, and give you some numbers in terms of what it looks like for us this year as we're implementing that. But not only that, our teachers took a leap of faith, I should say. And not only with new things that are coming about and taking them outside of their comfort zone, they also embarked on the blended learning approach. And so then they began to look at not only the center-based learning, but also what works for kids. And believe it or not, at the second-grade level, third-grade level, kids, when they're allowed to be given the choice or have input in their education, you'd be surprised how much they are engaged. We talk a lot about grit at our school and how it is important for our students to use their grit and to persevere and not give up. We'll come over to BISL, and you'll see that happening each day in each classroom. And so with that being said, those are just some of the things that we were beginning to take a look at, and we're seeing some really good success with that co-teaching model, looking at all of our students and providing that tier-one service for them and making sure they have the opportunity to receive all intervention as opposed to just targeted intervention and making sure that we are meeting the needs of all of our kids through those particular opportunities. And you'll hear a little bit more detail from the teachers when they come up. I don't get into numbers because, again, I think we missed the picture. But as you can see, our students with disabilities are not too far off from their peers. Our students are working very hard. And at the end of the day, you know, we say, students with disabilities, we do IEPs and we have specific objectives and goals that we set for them. But at the end of the day, they're responsible for the Ohio State's test. So I get a little frustrated with that, as you can tell. But we miss the opportunity to really celebrate the growth that they make over the year. And that's what I'm most proud of. But they do a nice job, as you can see, with the percentages.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm just always so proud of this opportunity because I get the opportunity to hear like the continuity of programs from our Wilcox all the way through Dodge and beyond. And just the opportunity to see where kids can really grow because some of the same things that you heard from Wilcox and BISL are happening at Dodge as well. Part of the thing, we talk about kids that struggle, and kids that struggle in general, whether they're students with disability or not, is that the most important thing are three components for me. And so when you're kind of looking at our data, it really comes back to quality teaching and learning, comes back to looking at student growth, and it comes back to closing gaps for kids that struggle. And so when we approach students with disabilities, we're really looking at it from those three components. So we talk about quality teaching and learning. It's not just teaching, it's not just standing in front of kids and making sure that you've delivered a message. It is really making sure that the quality teaching is connecting with kids. And I heard Mrs. Johnson say, building those relationships to really make sure you understand what students' weaknesses are and strengths are, and be able to build from there. And so when we're talking about blended learning, or we're talking about inclusion and co-teaching, that's what we're really talking about, the opportunity to really dig down deeper into what students' strengths and weaknesses are. At Dodge, we are really proud about our inclusion model, our co-teaching model. Because the essence of that is the opportunity to move kids into their targeted groups, look at their individualized strengths and weaknesses, differentiate instruction based on individual needs. It also gives us the opportunity to reach the higher kids at that same level. But again, since we're talking about students with disabilities, we're talking about how we are able to dig down to specific strengths and weaknesses here. When you look at our math and reading data, what you'll see is that our students are doing pretty well compared to state averages. But you also see that there's a piece where, at this age group, where we start to differentiate away from skill-based to application. And so when you look at the math piece in particular, where the kids may struggle with some of like fact-finding and things like that, as they get into fourth, fifth, and sixth grade in particular, it's, we're looking more at access of knowledge, how kids are able to access knowledge, how quickly or how fluently they're able to pull strategies and skills out. And so that's a whole nother layer of their disability that we have to kind of address and work through. And so at this age, you'll see that, again, I think we're doing pretty well compared to the state reference. But at the same time, the most important part is, we're looking at kids where they are. And a lot of times, they're starting below grade level, and are we able to get them a year's growth or more to help close that gap? And sometimes that may take a year or two to help close that gap, so that long-term piece. And I heard Mrs. Johnson talk a little bit about the achievement piece. But our piece right now with students that struggle is closing gaps and moving that needle, as we talked a lot about. When we're looking at growth particularly, we're looking at, again, taking kids from where they are, which could be one or two or three grade levels below grade level, and trying to move them at that skill level. And so a lot of times, we're targeting instruction around things that are not necessarily grade level. And so I think that is why that's so important to have an inclusion kind of model. And that inclusion model means access to grade-level curriculum. And I think not for some opportunities, when you don't have that access to grade-level curriculum, gaps gain. You may be able to patch some skills, but the gaps without that grade-level curriculum gain. So that's why I'm glad, as we've gone through our continuum of experiences through the SST8, we're really talking about making sure kids have gap closing, access to grade-level curriculum, and making sure that they're able to continue to grow and close gaps. When you look at our reading as well, I think we're doing pretty well related to the state as well. For reading is particularly a struggle for kids, students with disabilities sometimes because we're not talking about, you know, moving away from some of the decoding and the phonics-based pieces to being able to apply and comprehend. And so we're working closely with kids on that comprehension and still closing those gaps. But again, we're also still making sure that we're maintaining that grade-level exposure to content. The big piece at that point is that the readability of the text becomes more of a challenge for kids. And so as we're bringing kids into the opportunities to read at the grade level and still close gaps, is where we're focusing our attention for kids. At the end of the day, I'm just really proud of our teaching staff too because they are really, really great at making sure that they have the opportunity to target kids that need it at all levels, making sure that kids feel like they're a component of the entire class and that they're not singled out, and opportunities to work with peers at the appropriate level. And so we're really proud about the work that they're doing. And I think it does come across in the scores, but more importantly, it comes across in how our kids are relating to each other and how they're navigating school.
Good evening. First, I want to start by commending our central office staff for the professional development they've provided for us over the past two years. I really feel it's high-quality professional development in the areas of co-teaching and inclusion and will tremendously help our students with disabilities in the years to come. I think we have to caution that sometimes change takes three to five years minimum to make. And so some of the results that we'll see, we're not going to see for a couple of years. I know when I got to Chamberlain 14-15, our three-year value-added for students with disabilities was an F. And we went to an inclusive model where our students with disabilities start and end their day with their intervention specialist, where we focus on what you've heard, relationship building, number one, and knowing their story, social and emotional supports. And then also, in the beginning of the day, we'd like to do what we call front-loading and really preparing our students for the day. And at the end of the day, some organizational, some interventions, and some help. And we implemented that in 14-15. And then fast forward four years, our value-added score, three-year average now, is an A-B. And our single-year value-added score was an A for our students with disabilities. So that means they are making significantly more growth than expected with this inclusive model that we are now looking at district-wide. Also, our students with disabilities are part of our A for our gap closing. They exceeded the performance index for the state criteria. And so we're very proud of their performance index and the growth that's been made in that area over the last couple of years. One of the areas that we are still lacking, if you see on this slide and I think also the next slide, the English-language arts slide, is they are still not at the proficient level compared to their peers. And so that is still an area for growth for us, something that we're working on. But even though they are making growth, making more than one year's growth, it's not enough growth to get them to the proficient standard, that 700 on the OST test. And that's not acceptable for us. We're still going to keep working harder, continue to participate in the professional development. What was really nice about the professional development for us, it was, some of the things we're doing really was able to reinforce it. Like, this is best practice. These students belong in the classroom with their peers. We have high expectations for them, like all students in our school. And we want them to be scoring at the same levels as their typical peers. So we still have some work to do when it comes to our number of students proficient, but we are very proud of their growth in their performance index and of their value-added scores over the last couple of years.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to have the opportunity to not only brag a little bit, obviously, but also to present to you what we think we're going to do to make a change, to move that needle. I do want to start and recognize my teachers. I mean, they're all sitting in the back because that's what high school does, right? But this represents not just special ed teachers and intervention specialists, but we have several regular ed teachers as well as some academic coaches. And I think that kind of demonstrates the commitment that we have that all means all, that every child matters, and that we are going to present a plan to you that is going to affect the entire culture and climate of the building in terms of who's learning and who's learning what. Just like Ms. Johnson, I hate this slide. And I hope next year, when I'm standing up here, the slide looks significantly different. And to address the problems with that slide, we are putting in at least five different, I don't want to say interventions, I don't want to say programs, I don't want to say plans, but we're doing things differently in five different ways. One is in December, thank you for your funding of it, we started the OST Blitz, where we took students who were not currently enrolled in a class, but they had not passed the OST last year, that were special ed. And we gave them, in math and English language, Algebra I, Geometry, English Language I, English Language II, kind of a wraparound, deep dive, we're going to get you through, we're going to make a change in your OST points so that you are closer to graduation, trying to kind of kill two birds with one stone. And the OST Blitz results came out a couple of months ago, and we couldn't be prouder of them. 80% improvement in Algebra I of the students that took the OST Blitz for that, and 75% of those were special ed students. So that's an incredible change. 74% improvement in geometry with a 60% improvement of our special education students. 86% improvement in English I with an 83% improvement with our students with disabilities. I only want to say the last one. 29% improvement in English II with only a 16% improvement in special ed. But that causes us to reflect, like, what is the difference between ELA I and ELA II? What is the obstacle right there between ninth and 10th grade in English language? So it's an opportunity to reflect and change. But overall, I think our growth using that model was really, it made us feel good about what we were doing in the classroom, how we were using technology, all the different softwares that we have available to us that help the kids learn. And so I'm really proud of that effort. We've also implemented, as you've heard over and over and over tonight, not implemented, but tweaked, continued to use the co-teaching model. Many of the teachers in the audience are using that. We've attended three sessions of co-plan, co-serv, three sessions of inclusion. We are changing the way we schedule next year so that our special education teachers, that are co-teachers, will have intentional planning time with the regular ed content-level teachers. I think that's critical. It's not enough to just know that, how to take notes. You have to know a little bit about why we're taking the notes and how is it important to the content. We're also implementing common planning for all of English and all of math. So fourth period white will be, all English teachers will have common planning. Fourth period blue, all math teachers will have common planning. It's not an easy task to do that. It takes a lot of work because we also have to include our special ed teachers in that common planning. But I will say, that has been an exercise that has involved the entire school and has increased the leadership capacity amongst our teachers. They have taken that schedule and made it work for the kids, for their planning, for the content, for the, you know, end result of a test score. So I think they know, they've been working on that worksheet I gave them. You know, I had to give them a worksheet, just like you do to kids. I need this worksheet by Friday, and I need it filled out, and nobody can be wrong. But we're making it work. So all of those things have been important. Earlier, Ms. Trapp-Hagan talked about her three things, common planning, which we're doing, class sizes. The scheduling has also, we have really tightened up on the scheduling so that class sizes in math and English are going to reflect the need that those kids need in a classroom. We need class sizes of 21, 24, 25 if we want to move the needle. We can't have class sizes of 28 where we have special education kids in a co-teaching scenario. So our commitment is, one-third of those co-taught classes will be special ed, two-thirds will be regular ed, and we'll be learning from our peers, and we'll be raising the expectation, raising the bar. So scheduling is critical, co-teaching is critical, common planning is critical. I think at the end of this year, and more importantly, at the end of next year, because when those things actually go into place, you're going to see, I hope, huge gains. But most of it is due to the work that our teachers do every single day. So I want to get off that slide. Yeah, I'm with Ms. Johnson. Now, this slide represents students with disabilities in Ohio that are exempted from graduation requirements. They can choose a different way to achieve graduation. And the state exempted 20% of all special ed students from the normal graduation requirements. If you look at the next slide, you will see what Twinsburg did. We did not exempt anybody. Every special ed student is held to the same standard of every regular ed student. And I think that's important. That is a message that we need to celebrate because that says, all does mean all, and what our students are expected to learn, all students are expected to learn. And we're not going to try and remove them from the larger category to make our scores look better. So we exempted no one, holding the district to the highest standard possible. That requires testing scores, testing in scores in Algebra I, Geometry, Biology, History, Government. Everything is included in our report card. We're not hiding anything, we're completely transparent with what we're trying to do. I think that speaks more to a district philosophy than it does to my philosophy or to our philosophy, but it's a trickle-down effect, and it makes me proud to know that every kid that we are working with is going to be held to that standard. So we can stay on this slide all night if you'd like. I like it, I appreciate the time, thank you. Thank you.
So in conclusion, first, we'd like to, again, thank our teaching staff who are here with us this evening. And we're going to see if we can watch this video on the 7-10 split, and then we have some teachers who will close the program for us.
Hi, my name is Shelley Moore, and I'm a third-year PhD student at the University of North Columbia, Maine. As Canadians, we have a reputation for finding and embracing the strengths in our diversity. This value, however, hasn't been reflected in our classrooms, which still segregates students' viability, especially students with developmental disabilities. There's a gap in our understanding of what we know inclusive education to be philosophically versus what we understand. versus what we understand and the importance of understanding inclusion in our practice. This is the question I'm trying to answer in my research. Is how can we find the value in the day-to-day practice in our classrooms in terms of inclusive education? So how can I explain this to you? Now, I can sit here and try and describe this, or we could have a little bit more fun. Why don't we go bowling? So let's talk about bowling. You have ten pins, you have two balls, and you have a lane. The goal is to knock down as many pins as you can. But if you don't get them all, it's okay because you have another chance. But when I bowl and roll the ball down the middle and I don't knock them all down, what often ends up happening to me is that there's two pins left standing on either end and they stare at you. It's the seven-ten split and it's the hardest shot in bowling. How is bowling like teaching? The ball is the lesson, the pins are the kids. We aim for the middle, we do the best we can. The pins are left standing, we often have another chance to kind of get to them. But at the end of the day, those two pins that are staring, looking at you are our kids who need the most support and our kids who need the most challenge. So we end up choosing one and the other one is left standing. I just took all the fun out of bowling. Now, I don't know how many times you've watched professional bowling, but I spent an afternoon watching professional bowling. Who rolled that ball down the middle of the lane, they throw the ball down the lane at a curve. And I was actually really curious about this, so I called up a professional bowler. He was so excited. I don't think he gets a lot of calls about education. He said, "The reason why the ball has to enter at a curve is because you will knock down more pins and create a bigger domino effect if you enter at that angle." But in order to do that, you have to change your aim. In order to knock down the most pins with one shot, he aims for the pins that are the hardest to hit. Now, let's just let this sink in for a second. We are taught to teach the head pins. We are not taught to teach to the kids who are the furthest and the hardest to get to, the kids with autism, the kids with Down syndrome. The part that's critical here, and it really aligns with universal design for learning, is that so often, the supports that we design for those kids on the outside of the lane are actually supports that all of the kids need. This is the part we need to understand if inclusive education is going to move forward in Canada. How can we find this value of diversity in our classrooms between the students? This is not just important for the outside pins, but it's critical for every single one of us. And just think, all we need to do is change our aim. Look how bowling changed education.
So one of the things that really stuck with us is that analogy. When we showed it even to our teachers, and I can only speak for BISL, but everyone showed it and I'm sure everyone had that response that you're having right now, like, wow, that was powerful. And so what you're going to hear today is, you're going to hear a little bit about BISL, but this is something that's happening in all the buildings. The commitment that these staff members have that are here today is just more than I have the words to explain. At the last meeting we were at, listening to the teachers and their passion and their motivation to just go back to their buildings and make good decisions and select good lessons and diverse in their teaching and tapping into the different modalities and making sure that they are reaching all kids, it was just powerful. You heard Mrs. Trapp-Hagan talk about it, but you really had to be there to feel it, to hear it. And so we have two representatives from BISL today that'll talk a little bit about, not so much seven-ten split, but it will be incorporating it, what they would speak to you about. So at this time, I will call Mrs. DeHill and Mrs. Kinsella to the podium.
Hello. My name is Kristen DeHill and I'm the intervention specialist.
And I'm Elizabeth Kinsella. I'm the third-grade classroom teacher. We, this year, have been teaching in full inclusion in the classroom setting.
So with having the opportunity to attend all of these amazing trainings over the past couple of years, we've been provided with the information that we felt we needed to implement co-teaching in the third grade. So this year, for third grade, the two intervention specialists primarily work with two classroom teachers. So between ourselves and our instructional assistants, we are in the classrooms throughout the entire day. So as we have transitioned from our specialized instruction from the resource room to co-teaching, we have some exciting things we have learned, we've seen that we want to share with you. So first, of course, is growth. In previous years, when we've done our services in the resource room, we have the data, we saw the growth. But what we're seeing is we're starting to collect our spring data now, is we're still seeing that same growth with all of our kids.
So from the beginning of the school year, in guided reading, when we've taken their scholastic guided reading levels, our students from the beginning of the school year till the end of March, so March twenty-second, right before spring break, we've seen ten out of twenty-four students that have doubled their year's growth in reading. This includes special education, five oh four students that need reading interventions throughout the classroom day. We've also seen ten out of twenty-four students move up three levels, which is a year-plus growth, not quite the double growth that we saw with the other ten, but they've moved up significantly. Four out of the twenty-four students have also met that year's growth. So we had no students that did not meet the growth. So everyone made their growth for the year. And the best part about it is we still have two more months to go. So we're hoping for even better results by the end of the year. Of that, five out of six of our special education students had met that indicator of three or double. So they made more than a year's growth, if not double the year's growth, in this span of time.
So another great observation that we've seen this year is that not only, with our special education students, not only are we seeing them highly motivated to complete the same work that their peers are completing, but we're also seeing them build their confidence, their confidence in answering questions, their confidence in reading aloud in class, because they're so used to being around their peers now that now we've created this sense of family in the classroom. And we're all together, we all work together, and it's just been awesome. It's been so awesome.
So to add a little bit more to that, when, in years past, when I was teaching in the classroom, Mrs. DeHill or another special education intervention teacher would come in and have students leave the classroom to go to a resource room or to work on things. And the relationship building was not as strong. This year, what we've seen is that there are so many peers on every level in the classroom that are helping each other out. It might be one day where a student is struggling with a task where they're just not so sure of what they're reading about and another student will offer to help that other student to get through the activity. We're seeing a lot of more like peer mentoring that's going on and a really large movement in the classroom of ownership of their learning. So students are taking that ownership and there's times where they'll work a problem out that we thought we might need to support, but they're jumping in and helping each other out in ways that we could never imagine. So that ownership of learning has been incredible.
And the last observation that we want to share with you is, in years past, when we would work in the resource room and we'd pull our students, we'd work primarily just with our caseload. So it could be anywhere from eleven to sixteen, seventeen kids. Well, this year, with working with two classrooms, we get the opportunity to work with almost fifty kids and help fifty kids learn. And that has been another rewarding experience. And just working together with Mrs. Kinsella and really team teaching, using all the different models that we've learned through these trainings. Sometimes she's up in the classroom teaching, I'm walking around. Sometimes I'm doing the teaching, she's walking around. We do a lot of center work in the classroom. Sometimes we do parallel teaching where I will, or we will split the class in half and I'll take half of the class to my resource room. She'll do the same lesson in the classroom and it's just been a wonderful experience.
And so the fantastic thing about that is that it's not how it was in the past where the students always knew who was going to be working with the interventionist versus the classroom teacher. Now, there's days where we even have students that will say, "I can't work with you today because I want to work with her." And we make that work. And we're able to do a lot of quick thinking on our feet to help students in the mood that they're in in that present time of the day and to see what situation might be the most beneficial. The other really great thing is that we are able to break down lessons into such smaller mini-units because we have two teachers that are reaching everyone. And so in a typical guided reading setting, it would be one teacher in the classroom with one small group of students, with multiple students working independently. This year, we're able to target two groups of students at one time, which gives us multiple opportunities to reach students within a day because we're actually almost double-dipping in the educational academic environment. And so that's really been fantastic for us. So if you look up at the PowerPoint and you see that the bottom three circles are explanations of what exclusion, segregation, and integration look like. And these are all models that have happened at some point in the educational system. So exclusion is where you have your general classroom, where they're considered normal students in the green. Around it, you have students of various disabilities that would be in a resource room or not included into that general classroom setting. Segregation is also where you take that group, now you're putting them into a smaller group in, right within the general classroom, but you have them separated out in that area. Integration, you're bringing them into the classroom, but there's still that focus that those are students that are not necessarily a true part of the classroom. So what we've done is we've really focused on that inclusion this year. And it's very hard for some of our students to even recognize that there's another student with a learning need that's sitting right next to them because we've made it such a fluid academic learning environment that this inclusion has now become the normal and become the mainstay in our classroom so that the students are there to help each other. And everyone has a weakness, everyone has a strength, and we focus on everyone's weaknesses and strengths together to help bring everybody, to make the most growth that they can possibly make.
So this is the last slide and this is something that Shelley Moore shared with us at one of our trainings. And it really, when I saw this, it really, it hit my heart really hard here. So there's cupcakes and you have a cake. They're both made out of the same batter. The cupcakes represent all the different services. So if you need help with reading intervention, math intervention, speech, OT. The multi-layer cake has all of those all together. Instead of giving out one, two, three cupcakes to a select group of students, how powerful would it be to hand out a slice of a multi-layer cake to any student, to every student, where they can choose the support that they need to be successful? Oh, no, I forgot. Oh, yeah, I forgot. This is literally some food for thought.
Thank you for bringing up dessert so early in the evening.
I had to reminder of that. It was just so cute.
Could have like used a cake, you know.
Oh, sorry. So we would just, I'm not sure what the presentation is, but we'd like to thank you for your support and for allowing us to speak to you this evening. And again, one last thanks to our staff for coming this evening. Thank you.
We certainly appreciate, you know, not only the tremendous work that went into the proposal, the presentation, but also, you know, really the work that's happening at all levels and really could feel your energy and excitement and how things have changed, not only for your work environment, but just as importantly for the students. I don't know if it's appropriate to hit you with questions, so I don't know if colleagues have specific questions, but Jen's used to thinking, not if anybody had anything specific that they want to address. I was very.
Actually, I do. Two young ladies that were just up. What I'm interested to know, very familiar with co-teaching and oftentimes, you know, people say that they're doing it, but they're really not doing it. And what you just described, to me, sounds like you're doing it with fidelity. When kids don't know who the kid with the disability in the room is and they can't differentiate between you, the intervention specialist, and general ed teacher, like that's well done. What I'm interested to know from an instructional standpoint, just if you can just give me some example of kind of how, just a typical lesson, if you would, I don't want you to teach a lesson. What I'm interested to know is just, it's just your implementation of the co-teaching model because, again, it's, people say it's done in a lot of places. They say that they're doing it, but they're not doing it. Clearly, you understand it, you grasp, you get the concepts, you understand the end result, and clearly, suits are responding to that. And the first thing that popped in my mind is that, okay, well, you know, what specifically are you doing, you know, to make that happen?
So one of the things that we do for our daily fiber guided reading is we have the students, or we all break up into centers. So one of us will be leading the guided reading station. And then this year, the other one of us, we were leading maybe the writing station or we were leading a reading skill station where the other students were working independently on vocabulary or computers or word work. And so that's just one model and then we would rotate centers or we rotate centers.
Do they have the choice to rotate or like in blended learning or is it more controlled?
So the students are in groups based on either their guided reading level or on a skill-based level. So we did change that according to what we felt the focus needed to be. And then weekly, we would switch. So it wasn't like one of us was always doing guided reading and one was always doing writing. So we would be switching the pace of things, which also helped from the teacher's perspective of planning and workload too. So like we were, we were always like dipping back into what other needs the students had so that we weren't just focusing on writing with students or just focusing on the reading. We had the opportunity to both focus on both. And then as far as it would go, after a reading block of time, when we were teaching math, what we do is, it's very fluid. We both teach at the same time. If there's, if we're walking around the room and we notice that a student isn't understanding a concept or is maybe not grasping it in the way that they need to, the other teacher may just right there interject and say, "Hey, here's another way to look at this." Or, "Hey, Mrs. Kinsella, you know, I noticed that a couple of students over here might have not understood exactly what the concept was. Is there another way we can explain that?" And then we kind of all brainstorm as a class in order to understand what's going on. So it's more of a conversation during the day than it is like a teacher, leader, and an assistant. We don't want the kids to have that feeling that one of us is not equal to the other because we are both very equal. And I think more often than not, we look at each other as knowing more than the other. So I'm always thinking, "I wish I knew what she knew." And then she'll say the same thing to me. So we kind of, we share that load very equally and the students can see that.
One of the most important things, I think, that has helped us and to do it with fidelity, we are taking our time at BISL. We started out with the training, teachers came back and began to train the entire staff. We had to turn up on understanding the different types of co-teaching because it's more than just parallel teaching or it's more than just one model that you can use. So we had to have an understanding of that. But what's more important than anything else is allowing them a common planning time. They have to be able to plan together to be able to have that fluent teaching that's happening every day. And they also have to be able to work together. We're finding that, you know, sometimes the match is not there, but you don't know that until you try it, right? So we're experiencing some of that as well this year. So it helps us too to get a better understanding of who works well together, how we are going to look at that schedule so that planning time can happen. And in addition, we need to make sure that the same people are working together on a regular basis year after year because it takes time. A lot of the training that we've heard, these teachers are working together three and four years. So they're comfortable with each other. They almost know how to complete one another's sentences. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. And when I walk into the classroom, I see what they're saying. They're up there teaching and it's just bouncing right off, the other one is bouncing off the other one. Or they're in small group with kids and you see it happening. But again, it takes time. We're just in the beginning phases. We're seeing a lot of growth in our students, in our teachers, in that team teaching that's coming together. But most importantly is being able to have that common planning time so we can really understand the lesson and get to know what we need to do for our kids.
I also just wanted to add that with me working with Mrs. Kinsella and then one other third-grade teacher. So in the mornings, on Mondays and Wednesdays, I spend my entire morning with Mrs. Kinsella's class. And then my instructional assistant is with the other classroom. And then I spend my afternoons with the other teacher. And so we flip-flop and it's the continuity and. and it's, the continuity and the schedule has also worked really well too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Board of Education, as I mentioned at the very beginning, you know, things like this don't happen. Just on a women, a prayer, it takes a lot of planning. It takes a lot of professional development. So we certainly do appreciate your support of providing opportunities for our staff. The leadership team here really understands the need for professional development and our teachers have really embraced the thought of working together in these co-teaching strategies with right kind of formula such as this. We're seeing great growth in our students and in their success at school. It is about having the best talent in the classroom, though. None of this would happen if it wasn't for the individuals sitting before you and their colleagues who couldn't make it this evening. And the co-teaching model that is relatively new in our school district is relatively new and we're learning as we go. And with the learning comes sometimes the need to plow through the grit that you heard Mrs. Johnson talk about. But the end result, and we all realize it, is the high performance of kids and meeting them where they are, taking them to their very next best they can be. And so we appreciate your interest in what we do. I appreciate everyone who is here tonight and all of the hard work and dedication that you give to our kids every single day, the leadership team here, and making sure that the staff has what they need in order to do the best work that they do. So thank you one and all for being here this evening. I do appreciate all that you do and I know that our students and their families do as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Powers. Well, we are going to move on with our regular meeting, but yeah, I was just going to say, if they want to go, just as the other students of the month, you know, dinner, homework, you know, co-planning. Mr. Aho, do we have any cards for remonstrance?
No, sir.
All right. All right, I'm going to move on to H. Treasurer's Report. H. One, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes, regular meeting of March 20th, 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for H. One?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeFabio. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And H. One passes five zero. Moving on to action items personnel, without objection from my colleagues, I will read I. One, Two, and Three together. I. One, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts their certificated licensed personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. I. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and/or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Finally, I. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts these supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified pending satisfactory ORC background check. Is there a motion for I. One, Two, and Three as read?
So moved.
I'll go Mrs. Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? I don't think we have anything particular to draw attention retirement-wise. So, Mr. Aho, roll call, please.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And we'll move on to action items J. I will request that we break out J. Seven and Eight separately. So I will read, without objection, J. One through Six. J. One, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the attached listing of technology items to be deleted from inventory per the attached exhibit. Two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the below listing of items to be deleted from inventory. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with the education alternatives for one student for the remainder of the 2018-2019 school year in the amount of $6,384.0 as sent to the board under separate cover. Four, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the program site agreement with the Alliance for Healthy Youth to provide healthy relationship risk avoidance education for RB Chamberlain Middle School and Twinsburg High School for the 2019-2020 school year as sent to the board under separate cover. Five, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal for the overnight extended student trip for fifth grade students for George G. Dodge Intermediate School to travel to the Henry Ford Museum in Village in Dearborn, Michigan. One group will travel May 2nd and 3rd, 2019, and one group will travel May 30th and 31st, 2019. The trip will be paid in full by the students' parents as sent to the board under separate cover. And Six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the rental agreement with the University of Akron to use the Edwin J. Thomas Performing Arts Hall on Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, for the purpose of the Twinsburg High School commencement for the class of 2019, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do we have a motion for J. One through Six as read?
So moved.
Mr. Curtis moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. DeFabio. And discussion? Talking graduate, you're talking, start of the night, talking about kindergarten and we're talking about graduation. Wow. Mr. Aho, roll call, please.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. Those six items pass five zero. Moving on to J. Seven and Eight, without objection, I'll read those two together. J. Seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the consultant contract with Henness Communications, 50 Public Square Suite 3200 in Cleveland, which sets forth the rates and terms for communication consulting services for the Twinsburg City School District as sent to the board under separate cover. Eight, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a contract with Henness Communications of Cleveland for consultation services for the development of a comprehensive crisis communication plan for the Twinsburg City School District for the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement and at a cost not to exceed $25,000. This is a city-county fund expenditure as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for J. Seven and Eight as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. For a matter of discussion from my colleagues and for the general electorate, I've known Mr. Henness for probably 20-some years. Probably did business about 15 years ago, haven't since, haven't probably physically seen him in a number of years, but I will be abstaining just, just due to that relationship. His reputation is very strong in this field, but I just thought it was proper, knowing that I've known him for that long. Had nothing to do with this communications contract being sought forth and executed by the superintendent. So I don't know if you, from a point of discussion, if you have further explanation?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So Board of Education, as you know, one of the four goals for the school year talks about the development of a comprehensive communication plan. And part of that plan has to have a piece that is talking about how we would communicate with our constituents should there be a crisis in the district. Mr. Aho and I had an opportunity this winter to participate in the Ashland Leadership Series and during those courses, those classes rather, we had a chance to hear a presentation by Mr. Henness and talk, and he spoke directly about school districts that he has helped manage some crisis situations as well as private business, both in the state of Ohio, nationally and internationally. And, and the wealth of, of knowledge that he would bring to the district in helping us plan for the worst day if that should ever happen and we hope it never does. But if that were to happen, we would want to make sure that our communication plan is, is put together. In the worst case, there's not time to sit and write a narrative for a Black Wall Connect Call. There's not time to figure out a chain of command if I'm in Columbus and Chad's somewhere else and who's supposed to do X, Y, and Z. And so what we want to do is to work with Mr. Henness's organization to create or develop a crisis communication plan that will be very strong, that will be very confidential because certainly in these matters confidentiality is important. But leading on his experience in the field, we believe that the contract will provide for our school district another layer to our, our crisis management plan that we are already pretty proud of. This just gives us another layer talking specifically about the communication piece. So we appreciate your consideration this evening.
Thank you. Further discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Abstain. So J. Seven and Eight pass four zero with one abstention. Moving on to Nine?
No more than Nine.
Summer 2019 roofing project, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves a proposal with Garland DBS of Cleveland for the summer 2019 Twinsburg City School District roof replacement and repair project at RB Chamberlain Middle School through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Consortium for the terms and conditions set forth in the proposal and at a cost not to exceed $169,191.0. This is a permanent improvement expense as sent to the board under separate cover. Is there a motion for Nine as read?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Solera. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis. Someone's going to have a busy summer. Mr. Welker, anything to add particularly? All planned for and?
All planned for as part of the budget and looking forward to starting it this summer.
Right. And we can't do, say, warm and dry if we don't start with the roof. How's that? All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mr. Felber?
Yes. And that item passes five zero. We are at K. Miscellaneous. Anything from my colleagues?
Board of Education, earlier this evening, actually before our meeting, Mr. Reese and Mr. Holland and I were actually over at Kent State University's Regional Academic Center and Mr. DeFabio was there. Mayor Yates was there. Mrs. Megan Eberhart, the executive director of the chamber, was there too. The reason we were there, we were invited to listen to a presentation about an exciting opportunity for some of our students here in the school district called the Rising Scholars Program. And Kent State University is very interested in partnering with our school district to provide, what I'm saying is the golden ticket for a number of our students. And it goes like this. Beginning with this year's sixth grade class, the university has asked us to identify two students who would be considered to be first-generation college students. These students would be students who would be qualifying for our free and reduced lunch program. And these are students who have the drive and motivation to do well in school. We would be working with Mr. Holland and his staff and Mr. Reese and, and myself and Mrs. Farthing to identify two students that we think will do well in the program and we'll recommend them to Dean Spalsberry at Kent State University. Beginning next year, those students will be their first cohort. Students here, there are two students that will be in that class, two students in Nardonia and two in the Berkshire School District, so six. And so the university is going to be paying for mentors to work with these students, our two students for the beginning cohort. And they will follow the students through their career here through 12th grade. Upon graduation, if the students so desire, those two students will be given a college tuition free at cost to their family at Kent State University. So this is a tremendous opportunity. It is being supported, I'm understanding, through grants and through the partnerships of our local businesses here in town. And we are very excited and delighted that Dean Spalsberry has selected the Twinsburg Schools as an area that she wants to give back to the community through the Rising Scholars Program. So later this week, Mr. Reese and Mr. Holland and I are sitting down, taking a look at some recommendations from our sixth grade teachers, identifying students that we think may have the right stuff to do well in the program, and then making the recommendations to Dean Spalsberry and her staff. And the students will begin in the program next school year. So very exciting times. This came sort of out of the blue and so we're very excited to partner with Kent State University to provide an excellent opportunity to a couple of our Tigers. And to be told that every year, two additional students will be selected. So they, they will grow the cohort over time. And as those students graduate from Twinsburg High School, they'll pick up the, you know, the next group of students. So super excited and we're looking forward to seeing some great opportunities happen for some of our students.
Proud of my alma mater. Golden flashes, don't, don't leave anything left behind. Excellent. Anything further, Miscellaneous? The board does have a need for executive session, so I will make the motion that the Board of Education enters into executive session at, what is it? Oh, my.
Eight forty-six?
Eight forty-four. To discuss the employment and discipline compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy 0166A and to review the negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation and other terms and conditions of employment per Board of Education Policy 0166E. I've made that motion. Is there a second?
Sir.
Second by Mr. Curtis. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Felber?
Yes.
Mr. Curtis?
Yes.
Mr. Solera?
Yes.
Mrs. DeFabio?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
And executive session L passes five zero. We are now in executive session. We do not anticipate further business when we...